The expiration. So, I guess it could be read in different ways, but I actually saw it as sort of a softening of our sense.
You two are the communication experts. I'll go with you.
Dr. Noel?
I think that where "six whereas" is simply a perforce. It contains, anything it contains is assumed under the adoption of resolution number 1. They have to be notified by December 1st. If we pass a resolution, obviously, they're going to have to be notified by December 1st, or you can't implement the resolution. And that's the only action, uh, freight action element in there. Otherwise, it's just, as Karen said, it's sort of like, uh...
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about number five. This is feeling like a Carlsom movie or something where we all have a different interpretation of something, but I just saw this as a simple statement of fact. I mean, I don't know if necessarily these resolutions have to delineate those kind of factual points, but anyways, that's how I read it. But we're still not there yet. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, as the maker of the original motion, I'm, I would like to get, I guess I'd like to call the question, just to get an up or down on that motion, because I feel like if we want to address other...
I'm ready to go ahead and call the question, although actually requesting a call to the question then requires a vote, so let's...
I'll see what my...
There's no further questions on that? The motion is to remove the third whereas, to change the does not in the fourth whereas to may not, and to change the language in the second part, point two in the resolution to the Board of Education request that the community come forward with a new plan, a restructuring plan for rigorous language, et cetera. And then change the language in number four to the Governance Council has asked to approve all of the ideas in section three, divided into number 18. If the Governance Council determines that the decided are not acceptable, the expired will not be accepted. All right, at this point, we're going to go ahead and take a vote.
I had one word in there. It kind of was included in that, that the Board of Education requests that the community, in collaboration with the district, come forward. Number two, the Board of Education requests that the community, in collaboration with the district, come forward with a restructuring plan.
I'm sorry, did I read that out? Please say it again. Okay. Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carries three to two. Board members, we need to address the renewal. So, we need to address whether or not it qualifies for renewal under 47-607. Doesn't need to happen tonight, but it probably needs to happen soon. So, what are you thinking about this, Mrs. Cordero?
I'm just wondering, do we address that if they don't, if we haven't gotten a request for renewal?
We don't, what, what this original motion called for was it does not qualify for a charter renewal. And that was to give them direction to head. So, we can leave it without a direction for them to head in, but it is more risky for them.
I guess I'm hoping that the school community will have inferred that information from the discussion tonight, even as the maker of the motion eliminated that language. I do think it's really risky for the school to maintain a strong, I want to say, a strong reliance on only the notion of charter renewal. I hope that the school community has heard that that option might not get a three to two vote the next time it comes, and that the school will look for ways to maybe examine some other options, because this is, for those of us who helped develop or start this school, this is too important to lose simply for want of a, you know, of some willingness to look at other things. I think if, for those of us who were around them to start the school, I'm reminded that we started it, it's ironic, because we were hearing opposition to the notion of a bilingual school. We actually started it because we were unsuccessful in retaining bilingual education in the district, and we were all supporting bilingual education, and when it was eliminated, we... Now, I was one of the people who was angry at, it's ironic that I'm up here now, because I was angry at the school board, did not want to work with them, did not want to have anything to do with them. I felt that they had really, sort of ignored the wishes of the community. And Pete Relis was the one who I thought, who I think was visionary enough to recognize that we could do something positive in the face of something that we all felt quite negative about. I was willing to sort of go away and sulk, and Pete was willing to look for alternatives that could actually get something positive, even if it wasn't what we had originally hoped for. So, hearing what I have heard on this day as tonight, I would hope that the school community would keep that original impetus that came about. And I also agree that a dual-language immersion program is better than a bilingual program, and that's not what I'm suggesting. But I do think that perhaps a new charter, if it's doable, might be a reasonable alternative. I absolutely do not want to see us get to the point where the charter is rejected. And so, I'm just hoping that the school will do whatever it can to see if there are compromises that can help us avoid that.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just want to follow up, because I don't want people to be left with the wrong impression. But the reason that I support a new charter is because I think it's your best hope. I've heard people tonight say, "The school won't be the same." But I think if all of you are still there, you will be the same. And so, I don't want you to think that that isn't a viable option. Personally, I think it's the only option we have because of the way the law is written. But I think you're all here, and you can make the school the way you want it to be in this new charter. I know it sounds like a lot of work, but I do agree, I think it's a big risk to take to have, you know, if this board ultimately approved a renewal and it went to Sacramento and they shot it down, then you've lost all that time and all that energy. It's energy you're going to spend anyway with the revitalization that you're describing. So, I would just really encourage you, as Mrs. Cordero, to look towards that as a solution.
Mr. Herr?
I think I agree totally. That's why I want to leave to the hands of the community, to make sure they get the very best advice possible, that they do it in collaboration. I don't want to sit here with Dr. Hayden fighting, you know, you guys on data. I hope you can, if you, whatever route you go, I hope it's a collaborative effort, that we're going down the same trend track, because if we're independent, clearing convincing data, you're going to have to do a lot more. And I heard some ideas here tonight from the public, one about, hey, we only follow a few kids because they're still in the district, but there's some other district, well, maybe somehow lacking to draw in. I think a good, you know, a good expert on charters will be a great help to determine what direction to take. And I don't want to sit up here and tell you what direction to take, but I have told you that going for a renewal is a gamble, and I want to be a record saying that it's a gamble, but I believe that I want you guys to figure out what's the best process action for Cesar Chavez, and it's going to happen, it has to happen quickly.
And I'll agree with my fellow board members that I think that the message that we've all shared is that we really want this school to be open next year, that we want it to continue on into the future, and that we want it to be much more successful than it is now. And you'll really have to reflect about what the best process is for that at this point, because certainly for me, there is not the data that shows that it could renew. But what I hope is that, we're coming back on December 15th, at which time we need to see the action plan. And when we do that, perhaps at that time, Cesar Chavez would be ready, they'd have another two weeks to think about this, ready to discuss that further with us at that point, we can get it on the agenda for that time.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I think the way it was revised, there is no duty to come back with an action plan on the 18th. They just need to come back saying they agreed to the point number three.
Yes, they...
If that was changed, they have...
That has to come back to us on the...
That they've agreed.
That they've agreed to it.
Yep, but there's nothing else, just that they agreed to number three. Item four says they have to agree to number three.
In fact, if they simply signed the letter saying we agreed, I would simply forward that to the board.
So, there's no action plan?
So, we wouldn't take a little bit out of the board meeting?
Dr. Noel?
Yes, everybody is giving advice, and I'd like to give a little bit also. I think for this to get final approval, whether it's in the form of a renewal or a new charter, it's going to have to address the following. The plans are going to have to certainly address curriculum and construction, and that has been the primary emphasis of both the critique and the discussion. And I certainly agree with Dr. Saris about continuous progress monitoring, frequency of assessment, the standard package. But in addition, I think it has, the plan has to address governance, the composition of the governing board, and reflect more accurately the demographics of the school population. And I think it has to address managerial effectiveness, making sure that there's, that there are provisions for high-quality management. And in that vein, the school may want to look at outsourcing, because there are services available which are very high-quality, surprisingly not as expensive as one might think. I think that they, that there's a difference between a big plan and an implementation plan. So, you can have the great ideas of where you want to go, but then ultimately, the document, whether it's a proposal for renewal or a charter, is going to have to talk about how those are going to, how you plan to implement, and it gets, that requires some considerable detail. Very importantly, and this will surprise no one, I think that the plan has to include a sub-plan for program evaluation, and then, and that includes indicators of fidelity of implementation. You've got the implementation plan, it has, you have to check to see that it's implemented, and that's the first step. And then the second one is, a program evaluation has to do with benchmark measures that suit the performance, outcomes, and not wait until the CST score is coming in. I mean, that, you don't, you won't have that kind of time. And if you're going forward to Sacramento, they're going to receive results. I think you also have to demonstrate that you have the sufficiency of resources to pull it all off. That is certainly something that will be examined carefully. And that kind of loops back to governance, the quality of governance and management. A crucial thing, especially in a new charter, is that you have to be able to convincingly demonstrate that the group behind this has the ability to do what the plan calls for to be done. So, these are some of the things, and when I say, I think these have to be very rigorous, and I'll repeat that, I think they have to be rigorous for us, I think they have to be very rigorous for review at higher levels, whether you go up on appeal, that's to be rigorous, whether you go up for a new charter, that's to be rigorous, whether you go for a renewal, it has to be rigorous. The content will make or break this, the content.
Thank you. All right, board members, it's 11:11, so we're doing much better than we did last night. However, there are still items on the agenda that our staff would like us to get through.
Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry, if we're moving ahead, I just wanted to make one quick comment, and that is that the current charter, or I guess I should say the expired charter, does have a language in it that allows for a board member to serve as a liaison to the Governance Council. I think that is something that we should institute.
Is it a board member or is it a representative of the district?
It's a board member.
I recall being a board member.
All right, is there a board volunteer to do that? Is there a board volunteer to serve as a board representative on the Governance Council? Or to the Governance Council, I should say? It's a non-voting?
Yeah, it's a non-voting. I would be willing to do that if other board members feel that I'm an appropriate person to do it.
I think they're here a hard way.
Well, actually, I think because Mrs. Cordero served on the initial chartering board, she brings the value of perspective and history, and so I would support her certainly in that position. Thank you. So, if you want to give a vote on that, it's a volunteer with no objection, fellow board members. All right, let's, with no objection from the board, we'll quickly move to the other items. They were before. Mr. Smith?
Can we thank the audience?
Yes, thank you. We get to go home a whole hour early tonight, and...
Once again, shine.
And I really want to shout out a special thank you to our district translators who have just done a tremendous job over the past two weeks. Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Saris?
Thank you, Dr. Saris. In June of last year, we were notified by the San Barbara Department that due to the city's fiscal crisis, they have hired the vehicles to finalize and operationalize the crossing guard program, which we have passed one to in our elementary schools. As you recall, in August of last year, we basically appropriated about $112,000 to fund the crossing guard program, with direction from the board to negotiate a memorandum of understanding instead of our, using the department to prescribe the terms of connection to that MOU. After extensive negotiations between our agenda councils and the attorneys on, as we made, drafted an MOU that both the PD and our staff have signed off on, and is explicit that while they're still in the business of operating a program, we're merely supplying it. And it's also explicit that this is on a one-year basis, and we'll continue discussions with the PD about the future of the crossing guard program. So, at this point, we're asking for your support to approve the MOU, and we'll sign it, and get it back over to the PD and memorialize our previous conversations.
Thank you. Mrs. Deacon?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding of the City of San Barbara Department for school crossing guards.
Second.
This is valid. Okay, seconded by Mrs. Cordero. Any comments on this?
One third question I asked Eric during the break. Does this cover charter schools?
We had no discussion relative to charter schools, and I'm not sure they differentiate between elementary schools and charter schools, so we think it would encompass it, although I would say that if that's the case, we've never approached the charters about paying their pro-rata share, and that's probably something we shouldn't do.
Yes, Cesar Chavez is the same group, and they use the same crossing guard group that serves there with Franklin. Peabody Charter has their own crossing guard, and I don't know what their relationship is with the city on that. My only comment is, you know, hooray, this sees us through '09-10, but we have a big problem coming up for '10-11. And so, this is, I'm so grateful that this is in place now, it was really, got to a crisis point there. So, thank you for all the hard work on this, but let's remember that we have to take care of this again in the future. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously. Then, there's item E5, approval of board action on student expulsion case numbers '09/10-09 and '09/10-11.
In case '09/10-09, move to approve the finding and recommendations of the hearing panel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously.
In case '09/10-11, move to uphold the stipulated agreement for a one-year expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor? I mean, that's, I mean, aye. Second was Deacon, and that passed unanimously. Now, moving on to... Did I skip item two? Sorry. Oh, my goodness, I can't believe that I was trying to skip the single plans.
I tried.
I didn't try. Is Dr. White here?
Yeah.
All right, board members, let's go back to item two, which is approval of single plans for student achievement for all charter elementary and secondary schools. You've seen this before. We do have to make a comment on this item. What was new was getting ladies the signed site council information and also the budget information. So, do you have Mr. Wheeler to speak on this? Mr. Wheeler?
Good morning. Boris, morning. I hear Wheeler speaking as an individual. I've looked through the site plans, and I think a lot of the questions that you've brought forward remain unanswered. The single goal of the school site council and the expenditure of those monies is to improve student performance. As I look through, there's a number of incidences where money's been spent on clerical things, and I'm sure there's some clerical work that needs to be done, but some of these budgets have up to $100,000 in clerical expenditures. There are another number of office supplies in here, some as high as $30,000. Once again, that may be an important expenditure, and it may have a link to improving student performance, but I think, as Dr. Noel asked for further explanation of those kinds of expenses, how does that improve student performance? It's still not been documented in these documents. There's irregularities in these documents that I find very concerning, as someone who serves as a chair of a site council, that there are folks from the certificated unit, classified units, serving as parents on boards, that there are inappropriate numbers of representation on the boards, that there seems to be a lot of inconsistency with the way boards are constituted, some principals are holding the elections, instead of having the particular groups create their own folks to fill those positions. Especially at the high school, there are disproportionate numbers of parents and students on there to the administrative and classified certificated units. So, these documents indicate to me that any of things are all over the board. B, there's not a real clear delineation of how the money is spent and how it's going to improve student performance. And C, that there is a very vast need for training of school site councils, and SPTA has offered to all schools that ability to bring in folks to do that training and to help them get better at that. For one minute, I have for a second, I'll take it back off, because I want to speak truly as an individual in this. I just think this is a very important expenditure. It's one of the few places where the community has, and the teacher staff has, say how dollars are spent, and I would encourage you to hold the schools to the standard that you want and make them produce the information you need. You don't have it yet, please ask for it.
Any board questions or comments?
I'll make a comment, sorry, I wasn't able to attend.
And hopefully, next year, I did watch the DVD, and it did surprise me that the principals didn't say anything. I would have had questions for the principals. I came up with a list of 22 sort of themes, and I noticed you did cover the parent involvement. I would have liked to know more about what measures, what measurements they would use to ensure that there was parent involvement, what kind of programs, I would have asked some, you know, I would have asked some more questions on that, but I'm very happy that you did that. I was pleased, I think, as I now looked at three of these sets of plans, and I remember that three times ago, technology was in every one of them, the need, the lack of, and what I saw in these is, we need more training in technology, or we, you know, we just, what we have needs to be fixed once in a while, but there were really no, other than one, one OAS might have been, has said they have no technology. But I was very pleased to see that that wasn't an issue in these plans, that it seems that the technology is much better. So, you know, and the data analysis, to me, the biggest thing, they want data analysis, they want help in that, and I think we're doing that with Edgiosoft and some other programs. But I looked at all the barriers, I always look at barriers, and those are the things that, some of the things we can do something about, but I was pleased in general with what I read from the various schools.
Dr. Noel?
Can we, yeah, maybe I should...
You need a mic, Dr. Noel.
Perhaps this should be a request on our future agenda, but I think we need to discuss the single plans again, and how to develop an optimal format for their review and criteria.
Yes, I would absolutely agree with that, too. Mrs. Woski?
I wanted to add that, I'm not quite sure if I shared with the board that this was the last year that we're using this template, this format for the online version. It's very user-unfriendly, and you can't, it's difficult to express what's really going on in the schools, and you have to flip back and forth between different pages on it. So, the principals have all, I kind of took a poll and asked them, and there were a couple that said, "I really like it." Everyone else said, "We can do a much better job." Now that we've learned through using this how to do smart goals and how to link it to the expenditures, we can create something that is much easier to, much easier for us to use, and then it won't kind of sit wherever it sits now, because it can be there. So, we're starting working on that already.
Good. I would like to just chime in that I, like Mr. Wheeler, I went through, and I certainly saw inconsistencies in the budgets and numbers that didn't necessarily make sense. And I know that those expenditures will be reviewed in the future, in fact, they'll come to us on the board to take a look through these documents, but we will never again see them tied to a single plan and what they were supposed to do to the achievement. And so, I really would like that process to change in the future. So, but in the meantime, we do have the existing single plans, is there a motion?
I just wanted to also agree with Mr. Wheeler. I always have concerns about the constitution of the site councils, and I'm often concerned that they don't reflect what, either full membership, full participation, or the makeup of what site councils are supposed to be. So, I would like us to also have some discussion about how to, I don't know, I don't want to say enforce, that sounds so heavy-handed, but maybe that isn't.
Train.
Well, train, but also somehow insist that schools constitute their site councils appropriately, and that they have, that sort of they follow through with that. So, I'd like to have some discussion about that.
Okay. In the meantime, is there a motion on single plans?
In the meantime, I will move to approve the single plans.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Moving forward to item F2, which is an update on status of special education. Moving forward to item F2, which is an update on status of special education.
Good evening. Just in light of the lateness of me, I'd like to make my comments shorter.
Go through the mic.
Just a couple, three things to report. One is it's been a great pleasure to announce that our autism class will be started next week. We really have many Cleveland school, and we've got an outstanding teacher with autism background starting and instructional assistance as well. And secondly is our home hospital. We've been tidying up the guidelines and procedures and referrals and getting the nurses more involved in that process as well to ensure that the program is taking in students that need that kind of experience, but also looking at, as they're coming in, an exit date and a review date so that the students can be reintegrated into the conference of school as soon as possible. And the third piece is on the translations. We've put some procedures in place because we were a little back, gave backlog in terms of turnaround time for IEPs. So we have allocated additional resources for translators, and we have a procedure in place that we'll be finalizing next week, as I mean with the parties involved, and we'll get that information onto our school sites and our program specialist and director. Any questions?
Mrs. Deacon. Regarding the autism program in Cleveland, where are those students coming from? Are they coming from other schools and moving to Cleveland?
We, right now, we have one student who is in the LEAP program, L-E-P, at the county office, and that was done in partnership with us while we got the autism class going. So we have that one, and we're looking at three other possible candidates in the very near future.
That will come from the county or from our district?
No, from our district.
And is there an inclusion component to that, or is it a standalone classroom? Do the students move into grade level classes?
We'd like to be able to do some inclusion with them. Now, we have for sure one instructional assistant. As other students come in, we have the flexibility of a second instructional assistant. As we do that, that will allow us to do more inclusion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hahn?
In one of the single plans, Cleveland, I believe it was, one of the barriers was lack of communication and collaboration between the site and the district special ed leaders. Are you aware of that, or has that come up, or have you done anything with Cleveland?
That's interesting, because I was not aware of that. Cleveland was one of the first schools that I visited when I came in. The principal was very amenable to us.
Yeah, I don't know when he wrote this, so maybe...
That was before I came on. But the other piece is, as we took a look at, first we started taking a look at where the facilities were available, number one. Number two, the students that could possibly end up there because of that handicap and condition, where did they live? And the third piece was, we talked to various principals, and the principal with Cleveland was very amenable to have him in the program.
I would just like to make sure you touch base with him to make sure that it's still not a barrier.
Absolutely, I will. Thank you. You're welcome. And Carol will update John Fickman also.
Board members, staff, and guests. I'd like to, first of all, to provide an update on these instructional systems. We have established a staffing formula and a referral packet for additional aid requests, and applying the formula and converting minutes to full-time equivalencies, and also looking at all the IEPs at Peabody. We did have some IEPs that were transitioned from the preschool that we needed some clarification on. We're pleased to announce that we have rectified the problem. We have put through the process of two additional instructional assistance, and we truly appreciate all of our assistance from our parents and from Leslie to help us out in really promoting this and working hard to resolve it. And I do apologize for any lost time and inconsistencies, but we do have something in place now. And we have created and tested email distribution lists by special education teachers and all our related service providers, and that's been critical for us to distribute information, provide immediate feedback, and gain instant support to our staff. So that's exciting. The next area I just wanted to update you on was the FICMAT work group. We did meet on November 16th, and the following areas were identified as priority: vision statement, communication, training, programs and services, and organization. And these priority areas were chosen based on the input from our community forums as well as from the stakeholders work group. And subgroups are being formed for each of the areas, and a draft vision, the due date is December 1st for a draft one. And progress reports are due from the other subgroups on December 7th. I know that it's a very aggressive timeline, but we are just looking for progress reports, and this will help us convert the FICMAT recommendations into action plans. And we have identified that 13 of the FICMAT recommendations have been completed and 121 are in progress, and we have a list of those, and we've sent that out to the work group and CC the board members as well. We also categorized the recommendations by persons or entities responsible to implement those recommendations. It was recommended at the stakeholders work group that we reformat this and share with those persons who were listed who would be responsible for implementing those recommendations to send that information out to those folks, so we can anticipate what the impact would be because we need input on that as well. And then we also wanted to talk about the fiscal implications. We did at the meeting look at some of the categories, and special education staff and managers prior to the meeting assigned some of the recommendations to what the fiscal implications would be. It was strongly recommended by the work group that we look at the general areas or priority areas and not have as much specificity to that. One of the things they recommended was to look at those areas that require immediate attention, for example, student testing protocols and those sort of things, accessible van vehicle and some of those areas. But we do have a December 15 interim budget due, and so I think we need to look at that further, and we were wondering what your thoughts are on this area, and I know it's very late, and to leave money at the very end is kind of very dangerous. So that concludes my report. A meeting, and we do have a meeting, right? Coming up on next Thursday at Lockleyman Cafeteria. And we have invited all of our special education providers and administrators, including our instructional assistants, to come and meet and greet all of our new management staff. The time is 3:30 to 5:30.
So it's 3:30 to 5:30 on Thursday and the 3rd. Any questions?
Could we get an email reminder of that, please? Thank you.
Any questions or comments for her at this point? It's obviously very late, so I'm sorry that we're not going to give you further direction on that at this point, Mrs. Mulli, or Dr. Mulli. But thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have two items going on to, we pulled out the three and F4, but at G, we have consent items that were pulled. First one was D1, Mrs. Cordero.
On D1, I think I'm an extraordinary person, but I find it hard to even for me to imagine how I could be in attendance and absent at the same time. So I believe that was a board meeting for which I was absent.
All right, is there a motion to accept minutes as revised? Mrs. Deacon?
Since we're revising this one, under the consent agenda, there's a name missing in the second sentence that says, "Board member blank who pulled items D3, 5, 6, 7, and 13." I didn't know that probably was it.
Yes, those, sorry.
Is she right?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's just, I think...
Board member blank, yeah, it's just missing Dr. Noel. All right, so adding in Board Member Noel is missing. Is there anything else?
No.
I was going to move to approve. All right, is there a second? All right, seconded by Karen. All those in favor approving the minutes as revised?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously.
Nope, the board abstained.
Oh, sorry, with one abstention because Mrs. Cordero was not here. So that carries 401. The next item was D3, approval of staff travel, out-of-state travel and/or expenses in excess of $500,000, dated November 24, 2009. That was Dr. Noel.
Yes, it's just that I somehow can't get it to my head that whether we have or don't have a spending freeze. This is a general fund. In the past, I've asked about California categorical programs, and so could you give us the official word? Is there a spending freeze? Is there not, and how does that relate to this?
Well, it relates to us in a couple ways. We invoked a spending freeze last year, but we've never addressed whether a spending freeze actually on the natural rolls into the next fiscal year. Usually we invoke a spending freeze to try and increase our ending balance, and then basically we kind of reassess our situation in the subsequent year. So technically, unless, we've never really had this discussion, I guess is what I'm saying. So our understanding is the spending freeze will last through June 30th. If we're going to invoke a new spending freeze, and we probably will, we'd probably do it after November. Well, and maybe a few more dollars, too. But one of the things I wanted to point out, I'm kind of glad you did pull this, as several of the board members heard me explain when I was on the panel that UCSB and SBT put together. The business side of the house doesn't have categoricals to draw and do any kind of professional development. We basically have to rely on the unrestricted judge of fund. And in fact, in a situation where we're doing probably the most fiscally challenged environment school districts have dealt with in the last 70 years, I think it's important that we still continue some level of staff development. But the real reason I'm glad we pulled this is this person here actually went to this conference last year and paid for it all out of her own pocket.
Well...
All right, just thought the board should know that.
Yes, I guess that we will all appreciate that for Mrs. Swasky, so thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So...
Second.
Seconded by Cordero, she had the mic. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. All right, with that, we are at item H, coming events, which we already talked about. Item I, board comments and correspondence.
Just real quick, two things. One, I want to thank Dr. Sarvas. Last Friday was Kick a Ginger Day, which means kick a redheaded, freckle-faced, fair-skinned young man, which I was. So I took it very seriously when I read it in the LA Times. I'm happy to hear that Dr. Sarvas pulled junior high school kids, and there were no instances here. The reason I brought it up is that at church, I had information that one board was a high school attacked, and so I'm waiting to hear the results of a senior high school. I don't have permission to give out the name for due retaliation, I think, but I'm glad it didn't hit us. It was a Facebook issue, but it didn't hit other areas. I'm glad it didn't hit us. And then two, I would just so pleased with the Coonbrook and the article that we had up, the Coonbrook experience with the principals and Dr. Sarvas that have been interfering with Jolannan. It was a great article and a great experience that I'm hoping that it'll happen again, and maybe some of us will also attend to hear it. I know Dr. Noel was there, so he might have the comments, but it sounded like it was fantastic.
Yes, and I would love to see that it does happen again.
Go to Coonbrook. Good.
And future agenda items? We already talked about single plans. Any others? Mrs. Cordero?
Yes, I'd like to have some discussion of how we conduct our meetings by, well, how we have them interpreted, or whether we can conduct them bilimually, especially in cases like this evening where it was easily anticipated that we'd have a large number of Spanish-speaking members in the audience, and I think it was, I know that everybody did their best, but I don't think it was, you know, it was a very positive way to deal with the situation when we don't have enough headsets and people are being asked to move around the room. I just think that we can find, I thought it was sort of ironic that in discussing dual-language immersion, we were unable to provide adequate translations. So I just think if we could have that maybe as a discussion topic, it would be useful.
Yes, it was definitely not a smooth start. I thought it ended up going better, but it was not a smooth, smart start. Mr. Hahn?
I read in the paper not too long ago, big article, I gave a copy to Dr. Noel, about a legal issue where school districts are being sued because their elections aren't by district, and some schools are paying on millions of dollars. I don't know if that affects us or not, but as a school district member, I was wondering if you could get it.
No, Mr. Price has actually looked at that for us, but we can have, maybe Mr. Price provide that information in the board brief. It's about districts where the voting population, demographics don't manage the demographics of the school board, but that's not the case in San Barbara. So, and that's about the voting population, Mrs. Cordero.
No, I wasn't going to say that. I was going to say that we actually had this discussion some time ago, and because of the way that our school district is constituted by city charter, we actually were looking at ways to establish district elections for the school board, but because we are established by city charter, it literally would take an act of, maybe not Congress, but the state legislature to allow us to do that.
I just didn't want to be blindsided by any...
Well, I think it'd be helpful for Mr. Price to provide the information he already has in the board brief for us. Any other future agenda items? All right, well, with no objection from the board then, we move to adjourns meeting.